We're gonna talk about one subject. That's the way the meeting's gonna be conducted. One subject, whatever is in the agenda. Right?
Right.
Is it an open meeting?
It's an open meeting. It's an open meeting. There's a spec- it is una special meeting.
It says here, "Regular meeting."
Regular meeting.
No, I think it's a patron.
Because in regular session, you need to have audience for patrons. So you call it is the wrong thing. This is what they gave us, regular. And that was what we're supposed to know. Hey, I need everybody to be calm. I need to ask you a question. And I'm not here to be disrespectful and rude or anything. I just wanna ask you a question. You would allow me to speak to you guys before you make a decision on this very important subject? I understand that it's not on the agenda. But like I said, I'm not here to wow anybody up. I'm not here to disrespect you. I'm here to discuss some very valuable points that will play a very big role in making this decision. Will you allow me?
The last thing that comes to you guys want to wait for a minute? Or you guys want to start?
I personally think that we should let her speak before we start the meeting. We're waiting for the mayor anyway, so... I would feel okay, but...
Like I mentioned, I'm not here to be rude or disrespectful. And I please, I ask the community to please keep your comments to yourself for a little bit until I finish. And I leave and it's up to you.
No, no. Let's, let's...
But...
Hold on, hold on. Vamos a ser árbitros. You're asking us.
Yes.
And we're gonna ask you guys. How long are we gonna be here? Come on, I'm just asking you guys. We have 100, 200 people here. Okay? 200 people. We'll give you, your personality. It's up to them. 30 minutes to whatever it is. And then we'll make a decision. And then we have, we're gonna show you guys. You guys want an explanation of what, why we're doing. There's gonna be a slide. There's gonna be a slide and you guys can look at it.
So do you want to start the slide?
Do we have an agreement?
Do you wanna start the slide first?
No.
She's one person, she's not everybody.
No, I understand. But I'm asking you...
You're giving us 30 minutes to talk, talk. If it takes me five minutes to put on my...
We're turning it for a week. I'm not gonna, you're not the vocal. I think this, 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 this... This has gone through our mind and I think this, we can make a change.
And that's very good, you find it, I respect that.
Wait, are you all right? For 30 minutes? 30 minutes. Bueno, look. Look, look, guys. It's not in the agenda, guys. We're disrespecting y si no queremos el respeto. No, no. And we're not obligated to do it, guys. It's in the law, there is nothing here. Not for the community. Look, guys. You serve the community. We are. You have your agenda? You have your agenda?
It says, "Regular session." You put it as a regular session.
Okay. We're gonna disrespect the week, no, no, I had an idea. Okay?
So will you allow me to speak?
Go ahead, man.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. But I wanna make some very valuable points. And I hope that you all keep an open mind to what I'm going to say. Okay? Open mind, meaning that you're gonna allow whatever I say to sink in a little bit. Okay? We know that there's a very important item on the agenda. There's a 30% increase in our taxes, there's coming around. I want you to keep these things in mind. Okay? I'm hoping that you have all ready to process everything that you need to, in order to make your decision. Because it's obviously on the agenda. Two, listen to me. Have you given thought to what your platform was when you ran? You said it was all about family. Do you recall that? It is about family. Because all of these people here are family. The next thing that I'm gonna bring up. Have you given any thought to how much this 30% increase is gonna impact the middle class? The elderly, the disabled, and everybody that lives on a pay-per-pay, a paycheck-to-paycheck? Have you ever given that thought? Another point is that we all owe, we all have the city, the taxes. Have you given thought to how it's gonna impact the businesses? Where they're going to have to pay additional taxes as well as us? And how it's gonna impact them in having to lay off people that are still struggling? That are trying to make that house payment? That are trying to pay their taxes? Have you given any thought? I'm gonna tell you, I work for a social service agency. And I work with many, many individuals that are struggling. With a lot of stuff that you guys might not be aware of. I don't know how you all came about justifying a salary of $220,000. I don't understand. And those are things that I have been thinking about. And it weighs very heavy in my heart. Because a lot of the things that our families have come through are struggles. Are struggles. How many of you have experienced somebody that is great PM? And is struggling to try to pay their bills? And their medical bills? Our elderly live on a fixed income. That's right. A very small income. Do you know how much that's gonna impact them? Do you realize what all of this is going to do to your families when you make it? Do you realize what it's gonna do? I don't think that we're looking at the whole picture. We're going based on somebody that's telling you, yes, we need to raise the water rates. Yes, we can hike up the taxes. But be realistic. What are you going to do to all of these people? I myself included. Back in 99, I received $298,000 for an illness that I didn't ask for. Okay? And I'm still today, until today, I'm still struggling with people. And it's very hard. There's many people in this community that are going through those days. And you know this for us. What do you think that's gonna do to them? And I want you to keep that open mind because all of these things are gonna come back. And I guess I'm... In the bottom of the stage. And yes.
Right on.
This decision that you're gonna make, and the past decision of raising the water rates.
That's a very...
Before you make that decision. Thank you for giving me your time and attention. But please allow this to sink in. Because you're making a very good decision.
Excuse me. The reason I'm here is because I was requesting that people that did meeting within a day because the water rate was very high. I want to address the administrators regarding that Crystal City is a town of 8,000 residents. And over 80% of them are on a fixed income. Many are elderly. Others are disabled. And others are handicapped. And it's, they don't stand a chance. They get the same. You've been, Mr. Jonas, who you... Mr. Jonas, when you started the committee manager, I requested you and David to write it. So every three months, put in the newspaper, or they sent in a company revenues going to the caucus at Crystal City. Water, fines, everything. All the money going in. And then put underneath where it's going. So much for employee pay. So much for material that's in the street. So much, and you never done it. Now you have a salary of $220,000. Where a family of 3,000 people is excessive. And they express news, friends, a lot about you. But I request it's lower your salary to $8,000, $80,000 a year, which is plenty, plenty more than enough. And give these people some money back. Now why don't you put in the newspaper what I requested? How much for us or how much for parents? You dismissed, John Camarillo dismissed some of those best workers? And the here saying is, that Camarillo could have been paid $15 an hour, another $12 an hour. And you wanna put cheap labor, put those, do the same labor, at $7 an hour? People complain to me, but I never appear in a meeting, so they don't listen to me. And I always connect him, many politicians, none of the government. But I tell you, if I put it in the news, will not only calm these people from getting angry. And doesn't matter that I requested was to give any person over 68 years of age a 50% discount on water bill. And the veterans too. So the veterans gave us already by going to war. And they're intent to have something given back for our community. And the reason I believe that your salary is very high is because you owe some job support back. You got to be a citizen, you gotta respect the people. I'm here for myself, I live alone. I have no family. But I have people, elderly people, and handicaps, and friends that cannot talk to them, tell them they asked me to come. And I never come because I know I'm not listening to sometimes in the county. If I go, they issue the dependence on me because I talk too ugly. But this is the people's power, you administer. For all the people, from the church, to the poor, from the most holy to the worst sinner. You guys pray before the meeting and say it's a pledge of allegiance, but you don't understand what the pledge of allegiance means. One star in blue, silver star in blue. For each state of our country, represent our governors of each state, look up to that. For help in the leadership of their people. And you praise, you guys pray from the mouth out. But what you're looking for is your own benefits. And there's a selective kind of people that are benefiting, the elders want to oppress. The weak and the poor. And they're the ones who call me, come over here. And express to you that you have to consider that there's 80% of handicapped people in this area. You have to consider the level of water rate. Some people say they're very needy, or they cannot make it, look at their car they're driving, look at the foot. Their houses, or they go, go to the bars for the weekends to see how they party, and they just play needy. The needy doesn't do that. But we have the elderly, the handicapped, and the veterans. And those are the ones we have to consider. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, council members. I know this was not particularly a forum. And you're allowing this, and I appreciate that. Obviously during the public hearing, Mr. Jonas and Mr. Valdez, thank you once again. And I apologize for repeating myself. One of the biggest issues here is the lack of transparency and the lack of notification to us, the citizens and taxpayers. Now, you're gonna conduct a slideshow. That should have been done during our public hearings. Not now. Because today you should just be voting on the tax rate. Now, as per the law, is my understanding, if it's not adopted by the end of the fiscal year, it has to revert back to the original tax rate. So consider that first. Because as citizens, we have the right to go ahead and recall that action. But you did not do it over timely basis. That's one of the biggest things. You were elected to represent all of us. All of us here. Regardless if we think we don't support you or not, you're a representative. And as representatives, you have to uphold the law to the highest degree. And Mr. Jonas understands that. As the city's manager, I've been there before. Okay? It's a law to the highest degree. It does not accept you. And you have to respond to all of us. Not just the selective few that you think support you. And at this point, it's the lack of transparency, the shadiness behind it, these things are being done. The water rate, hey, I understand water rates have to be increased. You're doing phases. You don't hit all of us on that kind of rate. You hit us with phases. You're doing a small percentages. Because after the water, you're gonna have to look at the trash collection. After the trash collection, you're gonna have to look at the sewer. Where you're gonna raise those rates to? That's gonna hurt us. Remember, we're a small community. And one way or the other, we supported your efforts. But it's our right to kind of talk to you. And our forum is at public hearing, and you weren't present. I'm sorry you missed it. Because right now, you should just have the meeting to approve the tax rate. And I thank you for allowing us. And thank you for letting us say what we say. Because you are representing all of us. And your, your actions reflect us, the community. And that's not right that you only do a selective, um, few. Or only what, you don't hear everything or see everything. And Mr. Jonas, you really should have educated our council. This is not correct, sir. This is not correct at all. And I feel appalled and disgusted that you did it this way. Because our council should have known better. Thank you.
The mayor. I'm just here to provide to you with a letter from the appraisal district's attorney. There's a spread to the decision that you're gonna make today. Because there's a section of the note for Mrs. Bucklinas here. Had indicated that there is a deadline. Well, there is, there was a deadline. And the city has passed that. And here's, in this letter is the explanation. I just gave a copy to Mr. Jonas. The appraisal district's attorney did send one to him, I believe, yesterday. Now whether he received it or got it, I have no idea. But I do have the confirmation where it was received here in the city. The appraisal district's attorney also confirmed, I believe, contacted somebody here. And they indicated that they did receive it. And that they were going to forward it to Mr. Jonas. So I'd like for you all, before you all make your decision to read that letter.
I have questions. Can I ask a question to Mr. Jonas? Mr. Jonas, what is the percentage that you're gonna increase the tax rate for this year? For the coming year? How much of the percentage?
The percentage, there's been no tax rate adopted yet.
It hasn't been what?
It has, there's been no tax increase adopted yet. That is the action that's going on today.
Okay.
Now, here's, here's the thing. Remember your tax, I'm gonna answer your question, but it is important to answer it where all the pieces are together. When you get your tax bill, which right now comes from the Wall County appraisal district. It has a lot of different taxing authorities. The biggest pieces from the ISB, right? And there's, there's pieces from other places. A, what I would suggest relatively small piece of that tax bill is the city. Now that, of that small piece, the 30% is, is, is the right answer about.
That's a high increase because I did a research that in Lubbock, Texas, last year, they need an increase. There was a 5.4% increase. But the reason that they announced that the increase was because there was a lot of, uh, uh, unemployment rate that's very low. There was a lot of businesses coming in. And there was a lot of potential for building more homes. But you better realize that here, than Crystal City, there is no jobs here.
Let me, please explain one more time.
And how, how would you justify that? It's a small town, you cannot run it.
May I, may I, please explain it one more time, now, with the tax rate. If your tax bill is $10.
Fine.
One of those $10 is basically what the city is. Okay? So that, of that $1, there's a 30% increase. So your tax bill went up 30 cents on a $10 bill. So if you can use that as an example of the rate, so...
$4,000 in taxes.
And also for various owners, how is that gonna affect them?
Again, remember...
Because it's a small community, there's not a lot of work. And corporate strength, as it is, so how, how should we respond to that, as it is this year?
I, I tried to answer your question on what the rate increase. It's an increase of the city's portion of your tax bill.
But how are you going by the calculations? Are you going just by everybody's, you know, like, the city's, where you're going down? By what's the revenue that's coming into the city, came to everybody's, you know, income, primary needs? I mean, not individually, but I'm talking about businesses that is giving the money to the city.
Can I ask you one more question? Do you want to, what, how much is it going up right now?
If you are going to adopt the $0.023 that was published in the newspaper, it is going to increase 20% more.
Why are they saying 30%?
Because of the ultimate dollar amount we may have to take. It's gonna go up roughly to everybody. And I'm gonna give a...
No, no, vamos, just clarify this. It's not a 30%.
Then I'm gonna need...
Alíquien lo ella, 23 cents.
It's for, it's gonna cost the taxpayers roughly about $120 to $125 per account.
Per account, at base at that, at a $65,000 home, correct? No, you're basing it according to the paper.
My number is...
D C I E. According to the paper, they say for every home that is $65,000, there must be an increase of $20. They call it $120 some dollars. So if you're, if you're home, no va de los 65, okay? Cuanto le va a subir a un, a uno? Es todo lo que estoy preguntando.
Let me get back to the calculation. On a home that's valued at $50,000.
Well, she does have a happy first. This is my first time here. I voted for most of you. I'm not gonna say regret anything, but I thought you had my back. Anyway, I'm trying to unload my house and my son. They don't want it. They said, "Mom." They have, they're very educated men. They decide to go to law. They go, "Mom, we can buy a house. We can pay higher rates. Why are we gonna pay here? When the money's not, you don't see it. Where is that money? And I'm gonna pay my taxes, oh my God. I didn't know about taxes. I didn't know about license plate, I asked the lady.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I asked the lady, "Where does this money go?" They go, "To the city." I go, "What does the city do with it?" You have to give back.
Okay, but my question is still unanswered.
Hold on, hold on. I'm gonna, hold on now. Okay, cuánto va a subir? I want, I want it for it to be clarified because it's not a 30%, ma'am. Okay, go ahead.
On a $50,000 value home, at $0.023100, it's going to the cost for the tax, it's gonna be $511,550.
No, what she's missing is understanding. You're saying it's gonna cost $500. What did it cost last year? Okay. No, no, $500, because everybody's thinking it's gonna increase $500. No, has increased $500. No, it's, it's looking at an expression. You don't know what I'm saying, eh? How much do you think it's gonna be up for the year?
Water increase, so there's is $395.
Look, see, it's 79 cents? See, it's 79 cents, and it's $500?
Subtract the $395.
One goes on, it's 23 cents.
We're not talking cents.
And we're not talking cents, we're talking about dollars. That's more than two hundred dollars.
It's a difference, because last year's rate and this year's rate is going to be at least $120.
Exact. No, it's $300, guys. Okay, okay, no, no, no. No, no, what I, okay. The clarification that I wanted to say is it wasn't a $300 increase. Please make, make that understand to the people. You just corrected yourself. It was $120. Okay. No, it's not a 300. Okay, now, just remember that number, okay? Okay, okay, just remember the number, guys.
You're trying to make it seem like you're a $50,000 home.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not raising up. Yes, you are. Yeah, but...
They were stupid.
Nobody's saying that you guys are stupid, guys. That's what they're all here for. They don't, they want us to clarify what you're gonna hear the increase. It's, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. It's, it's clarifying.
The message that we're getting by your voice. That's minimal, you're trying to fight dollars plus.
No, ma'am, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm...
We understand, we understand perfectly. But the difference, we knew it wasn't gonna go up by $500. We knew it was going to go up to $500 as compared to the year before. We understand that.
We wanna see the difference, right? If we're here to see how much money would increase this annual. If we, if we were proposing the way we want.
It's far as it didn't increase.
Okay, hold on.
Just to clarify, I was in the there, can you make the decision? I think when the citizens came in, the citizens were the ones who did the research to see, you know, how much savings the city was going to get, uh, receive. I asked a question to the citizens, I said, "Are we gonna be raising taxpayers' taxes?" She clearly said, "No, we're not going to be raising taxpayers' taxes." Okay? What we're going to be doing with this program that we're about to introduce is any savings that we receive with this program, we're gonna use that savings and pay the note. Now, I don't know what happened after I left, but now everything's been turned around. Why don't we stick to the same plan that we had when we agreed to the research? You know, because that's the reason I voted for, because I did vote for. You all go back to Jerry, can show you the video I voted for, because I think it was a good thing for the community. But it was not a good thing for us to raise taxes. That was not the concept that we had in place when we initially started the plan. So I just don't, don't know what happened. Now, we're raising taxpayers' money, we're, we're just staying with the original plan, wouldn't even be here. Okay? So you might wanna explain to us what happened from the initial plan, but now?
Right. Anybody else? What did you have on 30 minutes?
Why are we trying to change the collection from the appraisal, about 6 years, and the other year? Change the collection from the appraisal district to the city? When you already have, you say that you paid $18,000 to the appraisal district to collect your money for the city. And right now, you, you already have your taxes for physicians and... and I know that it's gonna be more than $18,000. So, what is the reason behind?
Anybody else?
Can you answer that?
No, this is the way I see it.
Am I answering the answer?
This is the way I see that thing. Mira, mira. Quanto el land value? Land value? Cuanto vale, cuánto de coras tú... Cuanto cora en la President's district? Land value? No, hold on, man. Hold on, look at this. Yeah, in order for me to answer that question... Oh, I'm asking her a question. I feel... yeah, I feel... Hold on, hold on, please. I feel that in the taxes, there's a lot of property not being charged what they're being charged. We go out there and ask them, and she... The majority of the time, we have a regular meeting. Mis yolanda, ¿empeces no están ya aquí? No, me too. What I'm saying is, I don't feel that everybody's getting charged the same, guys.
I was really loud.
Exactly, man. How do you...
You're getting charged over what your rates were.
Exactly, man. Okay, how do we balance that?
By not changing it up to here, they're getting somebody else's news.
If you go out there and ask the workers, I feel that they don't... no, no están cora. This is my answer to you. I just feel that...
So, you're gonna hire a President? Is that what you're gonna do?
No, we can't, we can't. It's against the law.
So, why...
So, now you have the question to say, "What you're praising, it's the wrong way to do it."
That is not... You're not answering my question.
I just answered...
Why are you trying to select the taxes if you have a...
That's my answer to you, Juan. You don't think it's the red one, that is?
Why do you get out of that picture?
Okay.
You wanna ask the lawyer?
Where I work, homes are not permitted. We can get hard, and I think it's very disrespectful. I don't know your name, I don't know who you are. And sir, I don't even know who you are. Can you please pay attention to us? We're here because of you. Whoever hired you is not a very educated person.
Thank you.
They only have so much money. They're first, and they have their money. But I take their credit card away, because they don't know how to spend yet. I told them, "You only have $500 a week to spend. If you go over and you order." So, who hired him to pay so much money? We are very...
What was the reason for it? To make a decision like that without any advice?
My water's gonna... I only take one bath a day.
I don't take the toilet.
You know what? You know what? My husband... My husband lets him bake out. You know, they only flush their toilets during the day to conserve water, and that's what I do. And then he has $100? I need to throw up my... And he doesn't even help, and my husband's up there. So, I need to know who hired him, ma'am, so I can get his education and I can be hired.
I'd like to know that. Yeah, I'd like to know that.
First of all, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come for you. I am, like most people in this community, having a hard time to pay bills and pay the taxes and all that. And I understand that from time to time, taxes have to go up. The fee for services has to go up. I understand all that. But there's a proper way to do it, and it's up to the city manager to guide people through the process, to make sure that you meet your deadlines, that you have public hearings, that you inform the public. Most of us are reasonable people. If you do it directly and if you take the time to inform us, we'll understand. But it's when we do things and you don't put it out there for everyone to know, it's when we do things after the deadlines have passed. That's what I really have a problem with. There's a lot of people in this community that owe back taxes. And so, letters come from a trash. And then people say... I've heard elderly people say, "I have enough trouble dealing with this one tax attorney that's trying to collect for me." Part of my benefit from that has started getting letters from other attorneys, because you all are trying to go with separately. I think it's probably more convenient for the public and it's probably more financially responsible to do it all under one umbrella. But my main thing again is the way that things are done. I respect you and the fact that you gave up your time to be here, but you need to make sure that you are properly guided so that you do things the right way. And then we'll understand. We're not unreasonable, but you need to do it right. Mr. Mata.
I do have a few words to say in that, because a lot of things have been happening. Some of them, probably a lot of us are at fault. And one of the faults that we have as a community is we don't come before you. And one of the faults that we don't come before you is because he doesn't let us talk. Or you don't let us talk. And there's a break right there. We break away from the city council. And that's not the way to do it. We need to talk to you, and we need to get some answers from you. It takes... this is why people need to come here so that we can listen to it. Otherwise, he would have already ordered us out of here. You know? He's already got a...
They haven't answered my question.
I ask you, you know? It's not something that they're asking if not adequate, not something that's not right. I mean, you ask yourselves, who in Texas, as a matter of fact, who in this nation, this great nation of ours, who that has this amount of population of about 8,000 pays their city attorney, their city manager, a quarter of a million dollars? Who?
Nobody. Nobody.
I mean, should we even get into Houston or San Antonio?
They already hired someone like that.
I mean, look at us, you know? You're not in a...
But don't blame him, blame whoever hired him.
You're not in a Vegas, you know? This is a poor community, you know? Very little jobs. So, you have to take that into consideration. If he wants a quarter of a million dollars, I mean, I would like a million bucks. No, I can't, I can't, sir. If he wants that amount of money, if you were funding Houston or San Antonio, that's all we... If he gets it out of us, it becomes to a point that we are at right now. How many tax dollars comes from our pockets to pay that man? I mean, what far we do, if he can get that money, fine, but don't get it here in time, because we don't have it. We don't have that.
Maybe our taxes...
And as soon as I'm going to figure out... I'm sure you're trying to figure out how are we gonna pay all this? And that's where we come in. Okay, let's break their tax. Let's break their... But we can't do it. I mean, it's too much. Some of us may be able to pay it, but some of us, I even wind up losing their homes. And that's going to be in your conscience, because you... They're making that poor... It's unreasonable for us to ask you.
That's right.
Look at it, look at it consciously. Think about it. I don't have... I don't even know this man. And I don't have anything against him, other than what he's doing to Chris City.
Yes, sir. Basically, don't wait the taxes.
That's all they're asking you, and this is why you just gather when you're here. Because now you've gotten yourselves in a corner, where you have to raise everything in order to pay this man. When you go to the service station...
Do you pay that tax?
Let me just finish. When you go to the service station, for me, I can afford, you know, $1, $5, $10 worth of gas. But believe it or not, there are some people here today, right now, that maybe have to walk over here, because they don't have the money to go fill up. That's right. And that, gentlemen, is a fact. And that is something that you have to get in your mind that, you know, you can't keep raising everything to pay this man.
That is wrong.
We have other priorities. Look at your streets. Everybody, you know, merits us above our streets.
Yeah, there was sand and everything. They haven't even been fixed.
A lot of things that are going on in this city are not being fixed.
All those grants?
And I could go on and on, but I ask you, gentlemen, look at it in a constructive way that, you know, don't just think about, you know, getting the money to Mr. Jonas. Think about us here. We are the ones that elected you there.
We're here for us.
And we expect for you another month.
We're not leaving. Fire him. Fire him.
Mr. Mata. Mr. Mata.
You paid for square feet and eat, no, sir, I don't. Enough has been said. The time is up. The time is up. We have... I actually keep an open mind.
Hold on. Hold on. Let's go ahead with the 30. Hold on. You're gonna have to make a decision.
I thought there was a deadline.
He's not... And the pay for Matt was...
It's a deadline.
I have another question.
Where I'm here.
I have another question. Mr. Mata, I have another question. Why did you let us know about the wooden chip patch at the city hall? Why did you put a water meal in the newspaper and the city didn't announce it nowhere?
It wasn't.
Why? No, it wasn't.
It wasn't.
It wasn't.
I thought that was on the red. And then once you buy, I say, "Three, one." You must make on the red. And it said that you... If anywhere you have anything when it comes to any legal territory or property, there is...
There's a good news.
So, how do you go about that? Why was that posted?
Why do you announce that? Why do you announce?
Address the deadline. There's a deadline.
I only have a question for Mr. Mata, for everybody, Mata, because you're our newest member. You were elected four months ago. In your platform, I never read where it said that you... that the taxes were gonna be raised, the water, the sewer, the trash, or this 30% increase. I never saw that in your platform. All I saw was that you wanted to continue. I didn't read in your platform that you were gonna extend Mr. Jonas' contract by another year. Okay? That's a bigger burden for the city. I never read that in your platform. You spoke about progress. Raising water, sewer, trash, and property taxes is not progress. Separating from the upgrade of the system is not progress. One of your biggest supporters, and I quote, "Came from your spouse, Hannah." You said on a Facebook page, "Lies about higher taxes and water rates are a sad reflection of people who want to scare you from continuing progress."
Bueno.
They're holding for you. All these people going voting through this, because they trusted you. They trusted you to do the right thing. And I hope that you do. I know you, I know your father. He's a great man, a great man. Whether that is him this time. Don't let him down.
Don't let him down.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
But whoever we put up there, we can take down.
Yeah.
We take them out. We can do whatever we want. Our... We can do it again. It's a common position, but we can forget this.
The city will meet in regular session. On a regular 4:50. On a special session. On a regular...
Mrs. Rice.
Our question still wasn't answered.
And now, you're gonna ask the gentleman's question, bro. You gotta answer this question. There's a permit or bust. Guys, you okay? Please. We're gonna pick open the... Yeah, but answer this question. I think I already did. This is the way I see it.
101 in Demetrius, we're talking to the community to order 4:50, 4:58. Bro, call us down to the floor.
President, we had Mary Cole, Ten, Madam Matas, Councilman, Loel Matas, Councilman, Colarana, and Councilman, Valdumilius.
Action, 341. Consideration appropriate action about home security for the city tax rate.
We can't hear you now. We can't hear you. Mr. Mata. Mr. Mata, I have a question. I might ask you a question. He's ignoring me. He's ignoring me. Yo lo que tengo, tengo por mi mamá que fue en Orque. No puedo creer que yo lo voy a dejar aquí para que le pagues más a ellos. No. Mi mamá ni capaz se pegaron mucho en el Orque trabajando.
Did I keep pronouncing and taking it to court?
No, we spare. The mayor has no way to prepare for us. He takes out his hat, puts it on his head. You're an hour late. Because of Martin's rule, we remove our tabs. What did you do with the money? You feel like you're on a casino.
I understand everybody has questions, but... I understand that. The Friday committee is going to...
Is that right? We're gonna need you for your new casino.
Adam 341, consideration appropriate action adopted the city of Chris City tax rate for the fiscal year ending 2016. Only permission from Doc. A number. I have a second. At 92.
We understand you.
At point 92.7. 92. Has happened from 2007 to 2012. Correct?
You're a senior? Yes, sir. You're a senior. 1.9 was 0.92, but then we paid a bar, and then we reduced it to 0.79.
That's my motion. Do I have a second motion? I'll go ahead and say it. All right? Any discussions? No, I want to discuss something.
Yes.
First of all, I just wanna... First of all, I just wanna take this time to apologize to the whole community for, for being, uh, in the paper saying that it was unanimous, uh, voting last time that we worried about this tax rate. And, uh, to tell you the truth, to me, I just, I, I take full responsibility for that mistake that I did. And I apologize to the whole city of Crystal City, but, yeah, to me, we're, you know, misleading. And I made some research, a little bit, and I want to just apologize again and again, because I am not with the, uh, rate tax that we're showing here, I'm against it. I did a little bit of research, and some of the items that I'm gonna say here, they're, they're, had, uh, Yolanda already brought them up, and, uh, on these, uh, we need to have like two hearings, right, Jonas? Two hearings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, we had a... We had a hearing back in, uh, September twenty fourth, two thousand fifteen, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Was there a forum there? So we did have a second hearing also.
Yes, sir.
Where, was it, uh, October the first, did we have a forum there? So, and we also, you mentioned, Yolanda, we had, and is correct, on the, the taxing unit must adopt this tax rate before the September thirtieth.
There are two...
Let me, let me finish, let me finish. The government body must ratify either the effect tax rate or last year's rate, tax rate, whichever is lower. And, uh, that's here on the, uh, I got all this info from the Truth in Taxation Rate, the Dabness. And, uh, to finish, personally, Mr. Jonas, I think you did not comply with the Texas Code and reference to the public hearings, and, uh, and end up the adoption of the tax rate. That's the way I feel, and it's here, it's not, it's not me, it's here.
So this is legal.
For the record, for the record, yes.
It's illegal. It's illegal. It's illegal.
It's illegal. So, uh...
Case closed.
Mayor? With all due respect, a vote? Against. Guaramo Pascacho.
Oh, yeah.
I want, mom, should you turn it on?
Before the, before the video, I would like to ask the mayor of President.
Sir.
The meeting was... I, I, that is very disrespectful, huh?
We start at two AM time, someone was working.
Work? Why did you make the meeting at four? Why did you make the meeting at four?
You're native, you're Osanti, you're from here.
Yes, you do. You were hungry, bro?
Yes, I ordered a bit of ice cream.
You mentioned that you were a favorite.
Did.
Anna Scotten, all those in favor, say aye.
You can't do it.
You can't take him out.
Hold on, please.
No.
Say aye.
Why do Mr. Jonas, that's right, let me go. You can't here. He's trying to face us. Look at him, from here, try. Boy, you should let him take over, he worked here before, he doesn't know anything about it. You always not taking the action, therefore, the motion should die, because he asked for a vote twice, and none of you responded.
He was, he was asking, he just had to... There's a motion, and I said, hold on, come here.
Mr. Mata, he let him take over, don't let him take over, he wasn't here, he doesn't want to leave it. There's no product. Okay, well, he was not here. We want Mr. Mata to go over to the other person. Mr. Mata, take over the meeting, he doesn't deserve to take over, he's alone. You should leave, you asked to leave. That's why I asked you. He hasn't been here. Mr. Gerardo asked for not to hear for, and for two seconds, he didn't hear anything.
We have to take a vote, for it or against? Against. Okay, all in favor, at the nine, uh, point ninety two seven. That's my, that was mine, she seconded, so I'm just giving her a vote.
Your votes are here, they should have been history soon.
All in favor? Aye. And he said yes? Three forward, correct? Two more times.
More to pass?
How much is?
Thank you, Marco.